Good morning, good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
It is now ten oh four and I want to call today's meeting to order. Today is September the eighteenth and the planning board meeting is now called to order. I want to thank you guys for coming out in the rain. I only can imagine what it's going to look like when it starts snowing. But I do thank you guys for coming out. We have the following board members with us today. Commissioner Washington.
Good morning.
Commissioner Geraldo.
Good morning.
And I am Chairman Barnes. We will now move forward with the business at hand. Please note that the deadline for all participation pre-registration and all submission of materials and exhibits was due twelve noon on Tuesday before the planning board meeting. Staff is available today for onsite registration or if you require any assistance. Please note that beginning on October the second, the planning board meeting walk-in speaker sign-up will no longer be permitted. We will now move on with today's agenda. The order of cases today are as follows. Item two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. No, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen will be removed.
Just through seven and seven's removed.
Oh.
We just do five and six. The seven's removed.
Oh, five and six are removed from the agenda.
Then it's seven. We're just doing cases five and six.
What the hell do I have?
This is the right one. I don't know what that is.
All right, sorry about that. The order of cases today are items two, three B, four, five, six, and seven removed. The next item on the agenda is item two, draft minutes of September the eighteenth. We look for a motion.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Chair.
It's been properly moved and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is item three B, executive session. The following close, the following is my close statement. Pursuant to general provision article of the annotated code of Maryland, three dash three oh five subsection B one, a closed session is proposed to discuss a personnel matter concerning an appointment position to the Department of Parks and Rec. Is there a motion?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. I would now call the meeting back to order. It is now ten twelve. We will move forward with the consent agenda items. Item four A, four B, four D. Is there anyone who wishes to oppose the staff recommendation on their consent surrender? If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, after consideration of the record for item numbers four A, four B, and four D, I move adoption of the staff findings and approval of the items on the consent agenda in accordance with the recommendation of staff.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We will now move on to the regular agenda items. First on the item is item five, departure from design standards MJD dash two zero two four dash zero zero five, Joe's Movement Emporium. We will now hear from staff.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. For the record, I am Candra Tishoma with the zoning section. The item in front of you is major departure MJD jet dash two zero two four dash zero zero five for Joe's Movement Emporium, which requests a two-foot departure from public space standard six of the two thousand and ten approved City of Mount Rainier Mixed-Use Town Center Zone Development Plan to allow for a six-foot high fence. The subject property is in the Legacy Mixed-Use Town Center, or LMUTC zone, and located on the south side of Bunker Hill Road between thirty-third and thirty-fourth Streets, approximately five hundred fifty feet north of Rhode Island Avenue. The current zoning ordinance requires properties in the LMUTC zone to develop in accordance with the zoning ordinance applicable prior to April one, two thousand and twenty-two, and the standards of the applicable Mixed-Use Town Center Development Plan. The current development plan considers Joe's Movement Emporium an appropriate development, recommending retention of the parking lot with no short-term recommendations for improvements. Staff find that the proposed structure does not present a danger to public health or safety. It is consistent with the character of development on surrounding land and is consistent with surrounding land uses. Based on this evaluation and analysis, zoning staff recommend that the planning board adopt the findings of this technical staff report and approve major departure MJD just dash two zero two four dash zero zero five. And this concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the planning board?
None.
Seeing none, we will now hear from the applicant's attorney, Ms. Portia Strahan. Before you speak, David, if you can swear in.
Anybody wishing to speak on this matter, could you stand and raise your right hand, please? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm Portia Strahan, the architect. I have no further comments.
Great.
Excellent. I see no one is in opposition. Are there any questions for Ms. Strahan? Seeing none, is there a motion? Oh, someone. I don't have a sheet. Is Ms. Brooky here? Yes, ma'am.
I have no additional comments at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I immediately adopt the findings of staff and approve MJD dash two zero two four dash zero zero five.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you guys so much. We will now move on to the next agenda item, conceptual, item number six, conceptual site plan CSP dash two four zero zero two eight eight zero eight old branch avenue. We will now hear from staff. Mr. Hunt.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. My name's, and a member of the planning boards for the RACR, my name's Emery Huang with Urban Design Section. Item number six on the agenda is conceptual site, site plan CSP dash two four zero zero two for eighty-eight oh eight old branch avenue. This conceptual site plan is for the development of forty-five to fifty-five single-family attached residential units with associated infrastructure improvement in conjunction with an existing office building of six thousand three hundred thirty-six square feet. As a matter of housekeeping, staff received three exhibits from the applicants prior to the two standard deadlines titled applicants exhibit one through three. Staff also received four opposition exhibits, title opposition exhibit one through four. Concerns raised by the community member will be discussed later in the presentations. Next slides, please. The subject property is located in planning area eighty-one A and Council District Nine. Geographically, the property is located on the east side of the old branch avenue, approximately to the one thousand one hundred fifty feet north of its intersection with Woodyard Road. Next slide, please. The subject signs is currently located within the residential multifamily forty-eight zone as shown in the image to the right. However, this application is being reviewed under the prior zoning ordinance and his prior zone is mixed-use transportation-oriented as shown in the image to the left. Next slide, please. Under both and the current zoning ordinance, the subject property is also located within the mandatory installation overlay zones. Next slides, please. This map show the topography of the property, specifically the signs includes some area of the steep slopes located in the central portion of the property. Next slides, please. The subject property fronting one master plant right away, which is old branch avenue, and is classified as Collector Road. Next slides, please. Most of the subject property is currently vacant with tree coverage, except the northwest corner of the property is currently developed with an office buildings. Next slides, please. This conceptual site plan shows the location of the existing office buildings and the proposed townhouse units and recreational areas, as well as one additional vehicular access point on the old branch avenue for future residential development. Next slides, please. And this conceptual landscape plan shows a list of the applicable section of the two thousand and ten landscape plan requirements, which will be further varied at the time of the detailed site plan for conformance. Next slide, please. This plan shows a proposed private roads located in the center of the residential development and stretches horizontally west to east. Within the subject property, the private roads will serve as vehicular access to all proposed townhouse units. Sidewalks will be located on both sides of the, this private road for potential connectivity throughout the site and will connect to the eastern sidewalk of the old branch avenue. Next slide, please. This renderings provide an illustrative view of the landscaped area within the subject property and the arrangement of the proposed townhouse units. In addition, it shows the location of the preserved woodland between the existing office building and the proposed residential townhouse unit. Next slides, please. This slides demonstrate the tree conservation plan, which is discussed on the pages twenty-eight through twenty-nine of the technical staff report. Next slide, please. So, as mentioned in the beginning of this presentation, the applicants submitted three exhibits. Exhibit one included the applicant's proposed revision to condition one B, condition three, and condition seven. After reviewing, staff are in agreement with the proposed revisions because these revisions are minor and many for further clarification. Applicants exhibit two is about the tie line detailing the community outreach initiative undertaken by the applicant's team from December two thousand and twenty-four to September two thousand and twenty-five. Applicants exhibit three is about the community meeting presentation. Concerns raised by the community member in the four opposition exhibits can be grouped into three categories, including transportation such as traffic congestion, traffic lights, and control. Second is preservation of existing woodland. And third, several problems associated with the construction company. Staff has provided responses to some of the concerns throughout the presentation. In addition, staff want to note that this conceptual site plan provides a preliminary plans, schematic plan for the development of subject site. Per the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations, a detailed analysis of infrastructural impact such as banonimated to transportation, environmental impacts, and park facility will take place at the time of the preliminary plan of subdivisions. With respect to transportation, infrastructure specifically, in approving this conceptual site plan, the planning board is required to find a transportation facility they are existing under construction or fully funded are adequate to carry the anticipated traffic for the proposed development. This finding is analyzed on pages sixteen through eighteen of the technical staff report based on the traffic impact study submitted by the applicants dated December sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Further analysis of transportation adequacy will occur through the certificate adequacy which will be required to obtain at the time the preliminary plan of subdivision. Based on the finding presented in the technical staff report, urban staff recommended the planning board adopt the findings of this report and approve conceptual site plan CSP dash two four zero zero two and type of one tree conservation plan TCP one dash zero zero two dash two zero two five for eighty-eight oh eight old branch avenue, subject to the recommended conditions of approval within the technical staff report and revisions proposed by the applicants and agree upon by staff in the applicant's exhibit one. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the planning board? Seeing none, we will now hear from the applicant's attorney, Mr. Tedesco.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and esteemed members of the board. For the record, Matthew Tedesco at the law firm of McEnroe and Greenbelt.
Matt, if you don't mind.
Oh, yes, I forgot. I forgot. I apologize.
I forgot too.
Anyone wishing to speak on this matter or appearing virtually, could you please stand and raise your right hand? Is there anyone online?
I got my hand up.
Thank you. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
I do.
Online, did you hear that?
Yeah, I said yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, David. Again, for the record, Matthew Tedesco at the law firm of McEnroe, here in Prince George's County, on behalf of the applicant, D.R. Horton Incorporated, on case CSP two four zero zero two. With me this morning from D.R. Horton, which is the number one home builder in the country, Mr. Griffin Burns, Mr. Brian George, Kelsey Stewart may be online, and Harley Fegan is also with us. The team made up of this applicant team is Rogers Consulting. With me this morning is Nat Ballard, Jason Staley, Steve Allison, and although not with us, Alex Vajagus. From my team, Dominique Lockhart, our senior land planner. Mike Lenhart from Lenhart Traffic and Consulting is online. And with our community outreach and consulting team from GS Procter and Associates, Mr. Monroe Harrison is with us this morning. Also with us this morning, I'd be remiss, Mr. Chairman, if I did not acknowledge that the property owner, not just the applicant, but the property owner, is with us this morning in the audience, Mrs. Miller, who is here with us, the late widow, Mr. Mike Miller, as well as Ms. Nancy Miller and her husband. Nancy uses that office building as her law office and has for many, many decades, the former law offices of Mike Miller. And so they are with us this morning, obviously in full support of this application. I do not believe they intend to speak, although they did sign up just this morning. They are here in observance of today's hearing and want to thank them personally for, for coming out this morning. If we could go to slide two, if that would be okay? Thank you. So, how did we get here? I think it's important to articulate this just for the board's edification. This property, as well as the surrounding property, and some of the property that's off-screen, south of Woodyard Road, at the intersection that we refer to as BK Miller, which is Old Branch Avenue, Maryland two twenty-three. To the east, it's Woodyard Road. To the west, it's Biscataway Road. To the north, it's Old Branch. To the south, it's Brandywine Road. So they make that intersection confusing, so we call it BK Miller. It's the BK Miller intersection as a downtown Clinton landmark. It's all subject to the two thousand and thirteen approved Central Branch Avenue Corridor Revitalization Sector Plan. That sector plan did not include a sectional map amendment. A sectional map amendment being the zoning maps to implement that plan. The sectional map amendment associated with this area was associated with the two thousand and thirteen Subregion Five Master Plan. The sector plan for the revitalization corridor came after the, the master plan for Subregion Five. It superseded in parts the Subregion Five Master Plan. The county council, sitting as the district council in March of two thousand and eighteen, undertook three different amendments to the Subregion Five Plan, one of which, Amendment Five, dealt with this area as it related to the two thousand and thirteen Central Branch Avenue Corridor Sector Plan. If you look at your screen, the image to the left, the prior property zoning MXT, all of that property in purple was previously something else. Various zones from commercial to medium residential. In order to implement the sector plan's vision, goals, and policies for the Clinton focus area, the council determined and decided to rezone not only that swath of property that you see on your screen in purple, but also property to the southwest, in and around that intersection. If this were zoomed out a little bit, you would see there's a lot of red, which is our commercial zoning designations, and then there was a lot of different shades of yellow, which is our residential. In order to implement those goals and policies, they rezoned a large areas of the, of that area to MXT. Some of the existing property that's still yellow, the R eighty, that's the Saint John's, Saint John's Church, obviously did not get rezoned because it's historically been a church. And by practice, we, we don't necessarily look at that as a rezoning because the likelihood of those properties developing in the future has historically been low, although that's somewhat changing and maybe we should relook at that practice. But that's why there's that kind of hole in the donut there. But everything else went to purple or stayed red. This property and the adjoining property to the north and the adjoining property to the east were no exception. Again, for the purpose of aligning the approved land use and development policies for the affected properties with the approved comprehensive plan vision applicable to these areas. Turning to that sector plan, the two thousand and thirteen approved Central Branch Avenue Corridor Revitalization Sector Plans, easier said. The conceptual site plan before you this morning is in conformance with the vision and recommendations of that plan. It promotes a mixed-use development. The project adds residential units to a site with an existing office building, creating a mixed-of-us walkable community. This aligns with the plan's recommendation for residential medium land use for the property, which is defined as primarily single-family dwellings, to and include attached residential dwellings, with a density of three point five units to the acre up to eight units to the acre. I would note that the MXT zone allows for this project up to one point four floor area ratio. This project with forty-five to fifty-five units is at point four eight, or point four five to point five five, so well below even the maximum allowed under the FAR. This conceptual site plan realizes a redevelopment of the Clinton focus area with a mix of uses, and it advances the plan's vision for this area as a, quote, vibrant mixed-use transit supported destination. And that's quoted from page ninety-five of the sector plan. It encourages economic vitality. The development fully utilizes the potential of the mixed-use transportation MXT zone by adding residential dwellings, which will bring new residents and promote economic vitality and investment to the area. The site plan proposes a horizontal mix of land uses with the existing office building fronting on Old Branch Avenue and the new residential dwellings located in the rear of the property to the east to provide a smooth transition to the neighboring residential homes to the east, which the property to the east is known as Woodyard Station, and you'll hear more about that in a minute. But that property was also developed by a company known as Four Star and built by the applicant here, D.R. Horton, which you'll hear more about in a, in a minute as well. As I mentioned, the project proposes forty-five to fifty-five single-family attached townhouse units. The existing office building is approximately six thousand three hundred thirty-six square feet. Total property is five hundred, excuse me, five point seven eight acres, with an FAR of point zero four eight to point zero five eight comparatively to the allowed one point four FAR. As I mentioned, the sector plan, with the sector plan goals and policies being met, this application promotes the orderly mixed-use development near a major intersection, the BK Miller intersection. It creates a mixed-of-us walkable community by adding residential units to a site with an existing office and nearby commercial retail uses. It is context-sensitive with the adjoining Woodyard Station project. We would acknowledge staff's review and analysis and thanks staff for, for its review. We do agree with staff's recommended, recommended findings and recommended conditions as modified by applicant's exhibit one. We further incorporate and adopt our justification statement, which is in your backup of pages one through twenty-six. And I would just mention for the record, all referring agencies recommended approval. Now, turning to applicant's exhibits two and three, and kind of while you have some folks signed up this, this morning. Exhibit two that you have in your materials is a outline of the, our outreach efforts, our meeting efforts that we have undertaken in this application. It spans the last nine months. I think there are two folks on the line this morning, one from Saint John's Church, as well as Mr. Pettit, who lives in the Woodyard Station community. Turning to the church and certainly will be able to respond to anything, but we did have two meetings with Father Dan, and I want to thank Father Dan for his willingness to meet with us. I think he is on the line this morning. Very, very good meetings, very constructive meetings, very insightful meetings, and I want to thank him and Mary Ann for those who I think signed up this morning. Those meetings were held in March and primarily understandably so, there are items of discussion and concern where the impacts and the buffering of this project to their existing project. I would note that the Woodyard Station project does have a multi-family component, which also adjoins the church property. We think we can do a better job screening and buffering than even what that project has done for the church, and that's primarily been the focus of what those conversations entailed. As your staff indicated, with the conceptual site plan, we do not have a landscape plan per se. We do, we have identified the landscape buffers that are, that are required. At the time of detailed site plan, we will have all those details. We will obviously continue to work with Father Dan and others with respect to that buffering. But some of the things that we've identified and talked about for your benefit is that southern border of our property, the northern border of the church property will require a B buffer yard. The applicable B buffer yard in this case will be a thirty-foot building setback and a twenty-foot landscape yard. The applicable landscape manual will, does provide and facilitate certain reductions. If you put up a fence, or if you have, you can get fifty percent reductions there. You can get other reductions based upon how the adjacent property is used, or whether there's sufficient landscaping on the other side. It's our intention to continue to work with the church, but also provide all plant units within the required landscape buffer yards without seeking any of those reductions. We understand the importance of the church and its athletic facility, field, wanting to have some screening from these future residents. We also are very much committed to working with the church as far as any plant unit material types. And we've also discussed at a very high level the opportunity to perhaps provide landscaping on the church property side, if that's something that the parties can come to an agreement on. So, we also had conversations about the circulation, traffic, and, in that area. The BK Miller intersection is a, is a, is a challenging intersection, to say the least. Many, many reasons for that. I think we've had conversations about this with other projects in the area, and there is a capital improvement program or project for that intersection that's partly state, partly county, partly developer-funded. It is within the six-year funding cycle. There has been funding put up by the county. There has been funding put up by other developers. There's actually conditions of approval of other projects that you guys have recently approved just this month. That requires millions of dollars to be put into that, that particular intersection funding as this application, at time of plenary plan, will have similar language and conditions. So, we've tried to articulate that to, to the, to the church, as well as to the community members we met with. We've shared those CIP plans. We've articulated what that improvement consists of and how that improvement went in place, which is moving forward, thankfully due to a developer participation agreement with another development team project for which I'm a party of. That project is finally moving forward. That intersection will be elevated to level, acceptable levels of service once that intersection is improved. is improved. Turning to the Woodyard Station. And, Mr. Chairman, I think I've appeared before you more than any of my colleagues. And personally and professionally, I have taken your words extremely seriously and have echoed your sentiments with respect to working with the community. And I stand before you to say that D.R. Horton, despite what you may hear, is a reputable company that does business in Prince George's County throughout the nation, has done tremendously wonderful projects in the county, too, including Woodmore Town Center, does things the right way, but sometimes needs to do more. And I stand before you, and I want to articulate a few things. We had an instance, and I don't know if Ms. Shollers is in the room or not, or I know you're involved, my internal team is here, but just to give you some background on D.R. Horton, we had a situation unrelated to this project where a property owner did damage to a wetland, a wetland that we, as an applicant, had promised to preserve. It came to our attention, to no fault of our own, and we got out in front of it. With the help of the Rogers team, myself, and D.R. Horton, we reached out to your environmental planning staff. We reached out to MDE, and we put a plan in place for that owner, again, totally unrelated, to mitigate those improvements, because we had commitments on a rezoning application to preserve that wetland. We didn't run from it. We didn't hide from it. There have been instances in this case that are totally unrelated to the case, but are absolutely related to the neighboring development. Those came to our attention, March, April, May. There's been some warranty claims against D.R. Horton, which are not purview to this body. There is a remedy for those, which, if we need to get into, we will get into, so I'm not going to get into those. But more importantly, we had a meeting on Tuesday night. We had been trying to set this meeting up for the last month or two. We weren't able to get it set up until Tuesday of this week with the Woodyard Station community. There was about 36 people in attendance. Mr. Pettit, who's on the line, was in attendance, in attendance, and we heard a lot of things. Some things that Mr. Pettit had brought to our attention early on, some things that were brought to our attention, the scope of which I don't think I had an appreciation for. Primarily, the focus of the conversation was not so much about this project and the CSP in this hearing was before you. The conversation was, we bought in. We live in this community. D.R. Horton was our builder, and things are wrong. So what are you going to do about it? Within 24 hours, Brian George, who's in the audience, a member of Forestar, again, Forestar was a developer for Woodyard Station, D.R. Horton was the builder. I don't want to split hairs between the two, but they are different, was onsite yesterday afternoon with the president of the HOA for Woodyard Station, walked the site, identified the trouble areas. And primarily, the trouble areas deal with some on-lot issues, dealing with improper installation of sod, even though all certificates with respect to layouts and ground cover, soil, topsoil, all were certified, inspected, and approved. That was some time ago. Some of the homeowners are experiencing, many of the homeowners are experiencing issues with on-lot issues. They're also experiencing issues with some of the stormwater facility, erosion center control treatments with respect to the grass, in particular, and sod. And what we heard on Tuesday night was alarming and disturbing with respect to, hey, if you pull up the sod, there's gravel. Can't grow grass on gravel. Forestar's resodded it two or three times. Still dead. Okay, I had one question for my client. What are you going to do about it? What are you going to do about it? So they met onsite, walked the site. They also identified about eight trees that are dead that the community has complained about. We put together an action plan. Literally, within the last 24 hours, it was just emailed to the homeowners association as well as the property management company late last night. It was, the property management company is literally in the process of emailing that to all of the homeowners. And I just want to share that with you and what that action plan is, primarily for the benefit of Mr. Pettit, who I doubt has heard this information, but certainly should be applauded, I will say, for making sure his issues got addressed, was it related to his community issues, and I want to thank him for that. D.R. Horton remains committed to correcting the deficiencies and ensuring that Woodyard Station community is brought to the standard that D.R. Horton demands and that those that the community deserves. We offer the following action plan to ensure that the project is brought up to code requirements and the D.R. Horton standards. The week of 9/29, which is next week, landscapers and contractors will be meeting onsite to evaluate soil conditions and scope of work to remediate the issue areas identified on the walkthrough. The week of 10/6/2025, they will begin remediation work. The extent of the work is contingent on the landscape evaluation, but the overarching goal is to correct the underlying soil conditions that are preventing grass from growing, lack of topsoil, improper fertilization, et cetera. All lots within the community have topsoil certificates accepted by Prince George's County. However, it is clear that there are certain areas with issues preventing grass from growing that must be addressed. The end goal for the on-lot remediation is to identify and remediate the issues preventing grass growth, verify appropriate topsoil depth and composition, and remove any rock, stone, or debris subbase. Resod lots where necessary after soil has been remediated, and ensure lots meet the county and MDE specifications, as well as replant up to eight trees. Forestar, who is a developer of the Woodyard Station, is committed to, during the week of September 29th, landscapers and geotecs, and this deals with the HOA common areas and some of the stormwater microbiome retention areas where they're suffering some failures with respect to the grass. Landscaper and geotech sampling areas to determine soil conditions. Soil samples will be taken to analyze soil composition and determine correct path forward to remediate soils. The week of 10/13, final action plan to be in hand to remediate soils, install appropriate topsoil, et cetera. Once soils have been remediated, areas to be resodded or aerated, fertilized, overseeded, as directed by the landscaper. The distinction between D.R. Horton and Forestar, we do not offer to obfuscate any party's obligations or responsibilities for the landscape failures in the common areas associated with Woodyard Station. Although D.R. Horton was not the developer of this community, the residents that reside within the community are D.R. Horton homeowners. For that reason, D.R. Horton will ensure that both the on-lot and off-lot common areas are brought to the appropriate standards. Now, Mr. Chairman, none of that has anything to do with this case, and I want the record to be clear on that, but it all has, has everything to do with your leadership and your direction, and your direction of this county, and what you expect of our developers, and what you expect of me as a practitioner appearing before you. The other things that we discussed at the meeting dealt with circulation and barrier. There's a barrier on Woodyard Road, if anybody's familiar with that corridor, that prevents the Woodyard Station residents coming down Woodyard Station Road to make a left turn out of their community. S.H.A. put a barrier up that limited to a right-in, right-out. Obviously, that has drawn the ire of that community. So they are looking and exploring for opportunities to make connections to the east in particular. We have promised, and we will, next week, provide them with information associated with their subdivision, the record plat, and findings made by this board and recommended by staff. There are pedestrian connections. There actually is anticipatory vehicular connections, but it requires dedication of off-site property owners, which probably will impair their opportunities to do that, but we've ensured and promised that we will provide them with that information. Your indulgence. Last, I just, for the benefit of the record, Mr. Pettit, who I know will speak here this morning, did provide a 30-page document. I'm not going to go through it verbatim, but in that document, there were photographs that were provided, I think, to tell the story of how bad D.R. Horton is and things of that sort. What I wanted to articulate is those pictures that were provided not fairly and accurately depict the property as it exists today. They show images from, I think, back in March, but Mr. Pettit can testify to when those pictures were taken. We did have pictures and photos taken on Tuesday, and if I could have those entered just as rebuttal, because I wasn't aware of that filing until Wednesday, we would like to have those pictures. And these pictures just more or less depict similar pictures that are in the backup, showing that primarily the road signs that Mr. Pettit had taken pictures of that were damaged have long since been repaired. I would also mention for the record that there still is an outstanding bond for those road improvements, but all roads have been topped, crosswalks have been striped, signs have been fixed, and the developer is expected to come off, get the full release from the county on those items any day and come off bond. I would also just mention for the record, as it relates to the stormwater and the surface issues that I just went through in great detail, there's still an active bond with the county for those items as well. So the developer is not off bond, notwithstanding the remediation efforts above and beyond what D.R. Horton has committed to. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would reserve any further responses and/or comments for rebuttal. We do have a number of folks here who have signed up. They do not need to testify unless we feel the need or you all have questions, but happy to answer any questions you may have. And again, thanks, staff, and thank you for your indulgence, for allowing us to kind of diverge quite significantly off the path here, but preemptively, I think you might be hearing things that go off the path, so I just wanted to try to get out in front of it. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Tedesco?
I have a question, too.
Commissioner Geraldo.
Mr. Tedesco, can you just brief the board on the status of the Attorney-
Attorney General complaint that was filed by-
Yes, Mr. Pettit. Yes, so actually, I have that entire notebook. We can submit for the record if you would like all that material. But Mr. Pettit did exercise his right to seek complaints at the Office of the Attorney General with respect to warranty claims. D.R. Horton hired outside counsel. I'm not involved in it, so this is somewhat third-hand, but my understanding is that D.R. Horton had 30 days to respond to those items and those action items, which they did in July, I believe, or I think the complaint, the filing was on June 13th.
It was, yeah.
And just because that's my birthday, that date stands out. D.R. Horton responded within 30 days in July. Mediation was never held, and then a subsequent letter in August was filed, both with OAG and to Mr. Pettit, advising that Mr. Pettit has pursuant to his purchase and sales agreement under paragraph 15, the right to seek binding arbitration over those claims. As far as I know, Mr. Pettit can confirm, but I'm not aware that filing with the AAA has occurred for binding arbitration.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I know that there are several-
In opposition, but before he speaks, I just want to make a comment. And as I look through this case, and I can appreciate the hard work that you are putting in to reach out to the community. It really means a lot, and as a former delegate representing that area, I know it pretty well. One of the things that I have come to realize is my passion now for planning and zoning. As I travel around the state of Maryland, I look at landscapes and elevation now and subdivisions, and I pay attention to those things. As I travel outside of the state, and I just got back from Orlando, I looked at how their communities were planned out and how it was built, and the material that they use on their houses, and all of those things, and I quickly reverted back to Maryland. And I just wonder why we do not use the same quality when we start planning out certain things and elements here in Prince George's County. And I look at Montgomery County and how they build some of their townhome communities and the structure and the material that they use, and I wonder, why aren't we doing the same thing in Prince George's County? And I look at Virginia and what they're doing in Alexandria and other places, and I ask myself, why aren't we doing the same thing here in Prince George's County? And I went to Arizona, and I looked at their streets, and I didn't see any trash. And I looked at their roads and how clean they were, and no potholes, and all of those things made me come back to the realization that I'm starting to become passionate about this portion of my job. And I look at the issues that we're overseeing now, but I was excited that D.R. Horton responded quickly. That meant something to me. Because at the end of the day, I think it is extremely important that we hear from the community and their needs, wants, and desires, or more importantly, that we react. And sometimes, we don't react because of cost, or money, or other obstacles that may be getting in the way, but I was excited to the fact that we reacted. But I'm also concerned that I am having conversations now that I want to look at the different variants and codes and how we build in this county. This county has to reflect who we are, the values, what it means. The reflection of a community should mean something to people. Listen, we all live here. We all want to be a part of the community, and the community should reflect who we are. And in some cases, I don't think we do a good job of doing just that. I think we rush to making something happen, and I think we rush to hit a check mark. But I want to make sure that as the days, the weeks, and the months go on, that we're going to start to pivot a little bit. And one of the things that I want to do is, I'm a sports guy, so every now and then, David, we're going to call an audible, simply because I think it's time that we put the people of Prince George's County first. And we must put them first in a way that we are listening to their needs, their wants, their desires, and not just rush to say that we appeased a certain group or appeased a certain person, that we are adhering to things. And, Mr. Tedesco, I must say that, I've said this before, that I think you are getting the fact that we are, that we must put people first in our communities, that we must listen to them, and we must do all that we can from a community engagement, community outreach, to make sure that we are including everyone into the process. And, D.R. Horton, I appreciate the fact that you are listening to your attorney and asks, what are you going to do about it? Because I think it's important that we react, and we react swiftly to issues, problems, and concerns, because when we react quickly, then those things do not fester. I think that we are obligated. It's our job, it's our responsibility, to make sure that we are doing all that we can here as a planning board before we approve or deny anything, that we are looking at everything holistically, that we are looking at things and making a real intelligent decision on what we're approving or denying, that we are looking at all the facts, that we are looking at every side of the equation to make sure that we are methodically looking at these things objectively. But I do want to say once again, not to be redundant, I am pleased that D.R. Horton acted quickly. I am pleased that Mr. Tedesco is reaching out to the community in ways that I hope every other land use attorney that comes before us follows suit. It is- It is important. Understanding that intersection in Clinton and the people that are there. I am happy that you have had a number of conversations with the priest there. I'm excited. I do believe that there's always room for improvement. And with that note, that concludes my statement, that I hope that we continue down this vein of listening and reacting. And with that, I believe that there was one person in opposition that has signed up to speak, and it's Mr. Neil Pettit. Here or online?
He's online.
I'm here online.
Floris yours.
Thank you. Am I able to share my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you to the board for giving me the opportunity to, to listen or to listen to my concerns. I entered this exhibit packet into the record earlier this week. I'm Neil Pettit, I live at 6510 Spoonbill Way in Clinton, which is located in the adjacent Woodyard Station community that was recently built by D.R. Horton and its majority, majority-owned developer, Forestar Group. Today I speak in opposition of this new proposed community at 8808 Old Branch Avenue. I've submitted an exhibit packet to the planning board, which outlines some of the most egregious issues with D.R. Horton and its majority-owned developer. The first on page two, exhibit one, is the clear cut of protected woodlands and no cul-de-sac, which leads to possible future development of more protected woodlands. Page three is a picture of one of the signs that is along all of the woodlands to the north of Woodyard Station and then to the west where this proposed community is located. When we purchased our home from D.R. Horton, they reassured us along, and they reassured our neighbors when they bought theirs, that all of the woodlands surrounding the neighborhood were protected and posted as such. When they built, and they were directed by that, by the county when they built Woodyard Station. We had a meeting, as Matthew said, on March 27th, and Matthew said that the only protected woodlands were a narrow strip of trees that are in between Woodyard Station and this new proposed community. It'd be like right here. A team of about eight to 10 D.R. Horton representatives came to our recent HOA board meeting. As Matthew said, their response to this issue that I raised during that meeting was that they were going to come and look at removing the signage that marked protected woodlands where it wasn't supposed to be. Did not take into account any responsibility as far as the sale pitch. It's the reason we bought our house where it is. It overlooks the woods, the marked woodlands. In fact, in that meeting this week, D.R. Horton and for Forestar Group even said, they claimed that the signs were not posted. That was immediately proven to be false. They are posted. I've talked to my neighbors on Tavern Street, which is these homes here. And they're extremely concerned about having the woods behind them clear-cut and built. You know, they were told, they bought a premium, you know, it was towards the end of the development. And again, they were told that that was protected woodlands. Another issue in this exhibit is the T-intersection. This here. So how it is currently designed is definitely going to lead to massive parking issues for residents if it's built like this. We all know, nobody parks along the curb, right? I'm just kidding. But we've seen in our dead ends, in alleyways, that people kind of squeeze in there, causes some parking issues where you can't turn around. When I, I'm seeing parking issues in our neighborhood, there was not enough parking installed down the street at the Springbrook Senior Apartments off Schultz Road. Not enough parking, people are now parking on the side of Schultz Road, partially in the road. I've seen people's cars get hit because there's not enough parking. I can see the same thing happening here because of the lack of parking. The T-intersection also leads to me to believe that there's going to be more clear cut of protected woodlands here. And my house is over in this area, about right here. Page five is notes from a meeting with several of the D.R. Horton representatives on March 27th. And when asked, when I asked Matthew why the T-intersection instead of a cul-de-sac, Matthew said that it was due to a direction of the county, that the county would not allow a cul-de-sac instead of the T-intersection. Page six is exhibit two, the improper installation of grass. I'm sorry, not page two, page six. Exhibit two. "D.R. Horton and its majority-owned developer, Forestar hastily installed grass sod directly on rock without first installing proper level, level of topsoil throughout the entire community, not just in sections." This has led the entire community to be left with grass either in poor health or, or dead. This is a, you know, a new community. I go around to other communities and, and the DMV area, and I see much nicer, better grass than what D.R. Horton and Forestar has here. Pages seven and eight is an estimate that I obtained through Augusta Lawn, which is a local lawn care business in Clinton, Maryland. And on the top of page eight, they have a disclaimer. And you can read through it, but the main part is, it says, "This deficiency is the result of builder practices, not homeowner neglect." This is for my personal lawn, which is the same throughout the community. My water bill is sky-high, I'm trying to water it accordingly to keep it alive. I've had to pay lawn care services, you know, to, to keep this alive. When the team of D.R. Horton representatives came to our HOA board meeting on September 23rd, I asked them if there were any sections of the community that did have topsoil installed before the grass sod. And I did not get an answer. And I want to stress, I do appreciate that they came out here to look, but I am concerned about the response that they're going to look at certain sections of the community. And it's the entire community that needs new grass with topsoil, not just certain sections. Here is, this was taken this week, right in front of my house. You can just see the rock through the grass and weeds on page 10 as well. More just rocks sticking out, no topsoil. This is my neighbor's lawn, a couple houses down. And this was taken this week, you can just see there's just the sod on top of construction rock. That's on page 11. This was taken in March. Again, you can just see the sod that was dried up, shriveled up. This is in view from my house, and you can see the protected woodland sign, it fell down there. Along the woods, every, about every 15 feet marking as protected woodlands. I'll turn to page 13, which is the Maryland Office of Attorney General investigation. I've attached a copy of the initial letter from the Maryland Office of Attorney General to D.R. Horton. This was sent by mediator supervisor Dolores Mazon, demanding that D.R. Horton provide answers to the issues that I raised by D.R. Horton. To date, they have not fixed any of the issues in this case. Issues are including, but not limited to, a missing window that was advertised but not installed, an improperly-installed dryer vent, a dead tree, an improperly-installed deck post that is partially within my driveway foundation. D.R. Horton has told me when they came out that this level of quality should be expected for a track home project. I have been in communication with the Maryland Office of Attorney General over this active case. Most recently on Tuesday of this week, I spoke with mediator supervisor Mazon. She said that the OAG, after only, after D.R. Horton only sent one letter in response denying all the claims, has now refused to continue participating in mediation and wants to move forward to arbitration. On page 16 is Forestar Development Group, which was owned by D.R. Horton, exhibit four. Page 17, I know that, I keep hearing from D.R. Horton that Forestar is a separate entity. This is just a press release from D.R. Horton announcing that a merger agreement that they own 75, D.R. Horton owns 75% of Forestar Group. Page 18 is ongoing issues. If this new community is built, I can see very similar things happening here. Where, when we tried to raise issues with the HOA when it was under control of Forestar, when they were still building the project, we would raise issues through our HOA company. And Forestar was still running our HOA during this time period. I had some issues on parking, people parking in front of my driveway, and there was no tow company, tow company contract in place. And there were no, no parking signs were not installed yet either. When I asked to speak directly to the HOA board member from Forestar about this lack of signage or no towing contract, the HOA company said that the board members from D.R. Horton's majority-owned development company, Forestar, chose to remain anonymous. This H, D.R. Horton, Forestar-run HOA really had no motivation to resolve the issues that I had. They would not communicate directly with us, and they wanted to remain anonymous. This practice of collecting HOA dues from residents while running an anonymous HOA board is just simply unacceptable. And it seems to be a pattern with this D.R. Horton and Forestar. Page 19 is what was given to me by D.R. Horton on the HOA guidelines or overview sheet, which stated that the homeowner's responsibility is to maintain your property or your lot or your lawn. Now, that was told to us when we bought the home, we had to mow our own grass. So a lot of our neighbors either hired a private company to mow their small lot and, or bought a lawnmower and weed eater. Later on, when we got control of the HOA, we came to find out that the HOA should have been mowing everyone's lawn all along. This is a landscape update. So everyone bought new mowers under this anonymous HOA that Forestar, D.R. Horton, was running. Just there was this lack of communication because they wouldn't even talk to us directly. So now the HOA is maintaining everyone, mowing everyone's lawn. But we had to sell our brand-new lawnmowers that we bought. That's page 20. Page 21 is some improperly-installed crosswalks throughout the community. So on the date, this is an email I sent to the HOA company that was sent to Forestar Group, D.R. Horton. It's a map that I sent, I was outlining some issues going on and the correlating issues with the letters. Here's some examples on page 23. The day before the final layer of asphalt was installed throughout our community, the day before final asphalt was installed is when they had these sidewalk or crosswalks painted, which caused the construction equipment such as bobcats, steam rollers, asphalt layers to drive over the freshly painted crosswalks. So once again, I am in newer developments in other areas, and I see nice freshly painted crosswalks, but not here because they installed the crosswalks the day before install, it should have been installed after the asphalt was installed. Sent these all, and these are still not fixed by Forestar or D.R. Horton. The signage, this was sent in March. It seems like within the last week or two leading up to this hearing is when they fixed most of these signs that were falling down. I will say that I sent a picture of these in March. It was shortly after a storm that the signs fell down. And I also noticed after that, that construction crews came in after the storm and after these fell down to remove the remaining signs that didn't fall down and then dump concrete, bags of concrete in the ditch. That tells me that these signs were not installed properly from the beginning, which caused these to fall down. Most of them have been repaired after now six months. There is one that is still remaining. In closing, D.R. Horton's application for 8808 Old Branch Avenue should be denied for the reasons I presented today, and feel free to please contact me with any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Pettit?
Just one, yes. Mr. Pettit, thank you for your testimony.
What is the status of the arbitration? Are you going to file for arbitration?
So I spoke with OIG mediator supervisor Mazon on Tuesday. She said that she's going to send me a, a letter that she received from D.R. Horton saying that they're at impasse. They sent one letter, I sent a response. They have claimed impasse and mediation, they no longer wish to participate in mediation. And Mazon, Ms. Mazon told me that they, she asked me, should, am I interested in arbitration through OIG? And I said I was interested in that. She said she was going to reach out to their attorney to see if they were interested in OIG arbitration. It has to be mutually agreeable. It has to be mutually agreeable. Um, so if they deny that, that's when I would pursue, uh, the American Arbitration Association process.
Is, is, does the contract sales agreement provide that if there is arbitration, it has to be through the triple A?
Yes.
I have no further questions, thank you.
I've seen that there are no other questions, uh, Mr. Tedesco.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, again for the record, Matthew Tedesco. Um, since we're on the topic of arbitration, um. So. Commissioner Gerardo probably is far more experienced in this area than I am, and so I would defer to his knowledge and expertise, but, but what, what, as I understand it, and despite Mr. Pettit's. Claims and accusations, um, reminding him that he was under oath. Um, my understanding is that the O A G could not have acted on his mediation request. Due to the claim in the binding arbitration agreement and his purchase and sales agreement. That that limits the opportunity for the O A G to actually participate in, in, into mediation. It wasn't a obfuscation of any obligations or requirements other than a contractual obligation to enter into. Uh, binding arbitration through the triple A. So that remedy still exists, it's not for this board to adjudicate and, um, certainly D R Horton would participate in that, D R Horton did provide. Written responses back to Mr. Pettit as well as the O A G, but given the circumstances and the contractual terms, it is where it is. There's an impasse, Mr. Pettit disagrees with D R Horton's responses to and include inspections. Inspection reports of the deck and, uh, with respect to the window, again, we're not here to litigate this issue, but was explained that the window was. Uh, an option for a high visible end unit, this is not a high visible end unit and it was not part of the. Uh, purchase and sales agreement of, of, of his unit, but. There's a process separate and apart from here today for the parties involved in that dispute to. Resolve itself if Mr. Pettit and or D R Horton want to avail themselves of binding arbitration, that is the remedy. And so I think we've spoken probably more than we should have on that issue as it relates to this application before you. With respect to the clear cutting of the protected woodlands, I know Mr. Pettit, um, in reliance upon the signs. Um, has indicated that the woodlands in and around Woodyard Station are preserved and protected. None of them, not even the ones on parcel A on Woodyard Station in a, in a conservation easement.
You know who installed the signs that says protected woodland?
Yeah, so, so I was getting to that, Commissioner Gerardo, so what we believe happens and. Um, Steve Allison is here from Rogers Consulting who reviewed and analyzed the T C P two. For Woodyard Station and he can testify more eloquently on it, and I know your environmental planning section staffer in the room as well. I was not the attorney of record for that application, so I don't have historical information or. Case information related to it, but we did pull the T C P two. In response to Mr. Pettit's written documentation that we got yesterday, um, and what. Occurred, we believe, is that on parcel A, which on your screen, parcel A sits the east of the boundary line of our property. Uh, but to the west of the last stick of townhouses in Woodyard Station. It's a homeowner's owned, homeowner, an H O A owned parcel that has, um, woodlands preserved but not credited on the T C P two. What does woodlands preserved and not credited mean? It means it doesn't meet the minimum requirements to qualify as preservation. Um, pursuant to the technical manual, therefore they're, they were not credited. Uh, but because they were preserved not to be credited, they were also not cleared, but no easement was required to be put on it. I believe and I, again, just, we believe that because of that, it was a recommendation that signs be put there. So that it not be cleared, not because it was a protected conservation woodland preservation area per se. Other than it was woodlands preserved, not credited, but the signage was put up there in that area. And it should have only been in that area, um, because there is no such. Indication on the T C P two for the area to the, on the northern property line next to Mr. Pettit's house, he's at, he's one, I believe he's one of the end units on one of the. Um, parallel sticks to the northern property line. The contractor that Four Star hired, those signs are not from the county, those signs are created. Um, put them up along the periphery of the ba- of the property. Um, so that's what happened, um, it wasn't. We don't believe nefarious in any way, I think it was just a, the contractor putting up the signs for parcel A and wrapped, wrapped around the property.
The signs were put up by the H O A?
No, the signs were put up by Four Star's contractor who did the site work.
Four Star was the H O A?
Four Star was the developer of the project.
They also were the H O A?
They controlled the H O A until it was turned over. They, once they met the membership requirements, then the, all H O As are turned over to the homeowners. Um, the H O As can't be turned over with the first phases of development because there's just not enough homeowners to satisfy the membership requirements. I explained to Mr. Pettit and Mr. Pettit. Was quoting me on meetings, I, I, I don't want to debate him on what was said or what wasn't said, but. We had conversations about the woodlands, it was very confounding to me on what Mr. Pettit was referring to because we were, we were aware of parcel A. I was also very much aware of the project that I was representing, which was to the east of his project, not to the north. And so there was a lot of communication about, well, what about the woodlands behind my house and. Is, is behind the north or is behind to the, to the west? And once I've determined and figured out what Mr. Pettit was referring to, I assured him that the. Project, the property to the north was not the subject of this application. Well, those woods can't be. Touched because they're in a preservation, I said, I don't know if they're in a preservation or not. Property to the north, we now know that they're not. Um, that property has never been, has never gone through development, we can't find any records of any T C Ps approved on the property to the north. Which is owned by a, a separate Episcopal church. So I tried to reassure Mr. Pettit that that's not the subject of this application. With respects of the woodlands to the west, our property. Again, that parcel A being offsite and being woodlands preserved and not credited. Um, we understand and we heard the concern, not only from Mr. Pettit, but for some of the homeowners that we met with on Tuesday. And what we have conferred with D R Horton about and Steve Allison, who, who's our expert arborist. Uh, we, what we're committed to and what we would proffer. At the time, whether now or preliminary plan or detailed site plan, whatever the appropriate time is, we will proffer it now is. To provide a forest edge planting along our eastern property boundary. And the forest edge planting, uh, primary cons- primarily consists of a layered plantings. Of understory species alone with evergreen trees and shrubs arranged along the new boundary where open space meets mature forest. This transition of layering helps protect mature trees that were once part of an interior canopy. But are now exposed to outside elements such as wind and sun. In addition to shielding these existing trees, the forest edge planting creates valuable habitat. Supports natural regeneration of native species and enhances the visual character of the landscape. That wasn't part of the discussion we had in March. It wasn't part of the discussion we had on Tuesday, it's something that came to be as a result of those meetings and those conversations. Uh, D, D R Horton in particular, but Rogers Consulting and with the help of Steve Allison. We have implemented these forest edge plantings in other projects throughout the county with great success. As far as retention and, and restoration of areas where woodland once existed but was, uh, impacted by development. Keep in mind overarching all of this is that this is planned development. Within the M X T zone to implement the master plan and the second plan for this area and the Clinton core. Um, I understand, uh, residents move in and they move in with woodlands in and around them. Uh, but the zoning and the other, uh, items, uh, sometimes dictate, uh, perception not being, uh, reality. Nevertheless, in response to the concerns, we would proffer. For forest edge planting along our eastern boundary, that coincides also with the condition recommended by your staff. That at the time of, uh, subsequent approvals, preliminary plan or detailed site plan, that we look at, uh, to the. To, uh, provide any additional. Tree plantings in onsite and particularly to the eastern edge of the property. Staff, we have not had the opportunity to discuss. The forest edge planting with staff, but that is something that we intend to do. Proffered here today in response to the condition that staff has recommended with respect to that eastern edge.
What, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr., if I may ask, so I'm, I'm looking at the eastern edge, it seems to be. Uh, the part that backs up onto Mr. Pettit and some of those other sticks, right?
No, the eastern edge actually backs up and then joins parcel A, which is a homeowners association parcel that has that woodlands preserved area but not credited area. So there's an H O A parcel between the last stick and then where these, the new homes would start.
Well, the, the trees that are there now. Adjacent to his property or the homeowners that looks like there's five or six sticks. That small green landscaping will remain?
If you're referring to, if we're looking at the screen, if you're referring to the sticks on the western edge of.
Right, the western edge.
Western edge on parcel A, yes, we're not touching parcel A. The woodland on our parcel is being affected, but we've got a condition to, uh. To, to further buffer, what I'm proffering to hear today is to do a forest edge planting along that buffer. That would, in addition to adding additional plantings, will also improve and benefit. The plantings that exist today on the H O A parcel being parcel A, um, as a forest edge planting to help. With evergreen shrubs arranged, uh, to help, uh, eliminate where. When you cut down the forest, trees that are left that have been surrounded by forest, they don't have the stability because the limbs haven't grown out, uh, the understory. We have an opportunity to come in and create that understory to help those existing trees on parcel A. So that's what we would, we would proffer here today.
Thank you.
With respect to, um, parking in the T intersection, I know Mr. Pettit indicated that, that, I said that's what the county would want. I, I think he's taking liberty with my words, what we articulated is, is that if you go to, uh, staff would go to slide. Your indulgence, I'm sorry. Go to slide six. The master plan transportation, oh, you had it, yeah, the master plan transportation, that brown road is a master plan road. And, and so is the pink and so is the green. And so what, in, in answering why do you have a T there and not a cul-de-sac, we articulated that. Every project we do, staff and the county are always looking for inter parcel connectivity. No, no exception to Woodyard Station for which there's pedestrian inter parcel connectivity and there's actually dedicated right away to the shopping center. Although it's only half section dedicated. What we said was we would expect, because there's a master plan road that bisects the property to the south. And the road that is within Woodyard Station is stubbed, that we would anticipate. That future inter parcel connectivity should the church property ever redevelop, which is a big if. Um, they would want that ability to have that connection. By putting, putting in a cul-de-sac now, it would forego any opportunity to ever do that, so. Um, that was the answer I gave. However, it was interpreted and represented here today, but that, that's, that was what the basis of that was. With respect to parking, um, we fully understand, uh, quite well those struggles with townhouse community parking, especially onsite. I would just mention that this is a fairly small development with forty-five to fifty-five units. We have to address that at the time of detailed site plan. At the time of conceptual site plan for which we're here this morning on. There's language in the zoning warrants that limits the maximum density at the time of conceptual site plan. We can't go any higher than fifty-five. We can go lower. We may not want to, but we can go lower, um, to a point that still makes the project viable. But we can't go higher, so I, I would just caution to. We know, we're aware, the county knows, staff is aware of the onsite parking, um, challenges with townhouse communities and making sure there's sufficient. Um, onsite guest parking. Although we have a rendered plan. It's not the detailed site plan, so I don't even want to get into how many parking spaces are provided. We will have to, to your satisfaction, demonstrate that at a future date. Um, the topsoil and the poor health, the dead, I, we acknowledge it, um. It wasn't easy for me to stand before you and acknowledge that. Um, but the facts are the facts. The ball was dropped. It became, we, we became readily aware of it, Brian, um, George is here who was the representative of D R Horton. Who has been working with the H O A president, they, I don't want to speak for him, but walked the entire site. They identified the, the areas of concern, there's, um. There's significant number of areas on lot, um, and otherwise, it's not the entire property. You can look at the pictures that I submitted this morning that just show that it's not everything, I know Mr. Pettit. Uh, would like everyone to believe it's everywhere, it's, it's not the H O A president and, and the walkthrough, they actually probed and pulled and looked. Um, identified the areas that are of, of attention. It will be remediated, it will be remediated, um. D R Horton acknowledges it, they will ask me to put it on the record. Um, which I have, and so I, I don't want to beat that up too much more, but, um. Mr. Chairman. I know it's important from the outset, always do the right thing, things happen. Um, I think it's, it's how we finish, not necessarily how we start. And I'd like D R Horton to have the opportunity to redeem. And have redemption with respect to, uh, these issues. And I don't want to split hairs between D R Horton and Four Star, I know Mr. Pettit did his, his job today to, uh, blur those lines. But notwithstanding, D R Horton is standing behind everything and is committed to making that wrong the right, and they will. And they will, and, um, with that, Mr. Chairman, I don't think I have anything else. I thank you, I, I understand this case has diverged, um, from the topic at hand. But understand how these hearings go, it's important to make sure we get it all out there and I appreciate your indulgence. And I appreciate you, appreciate you and the opportunity that the board has given us to be responsive. And I want to thank D R Horton publicly for, um, doing the right thing here and, um. Definitely making my job a little bit easier today, so thank you.
Yeah, are there any questions for Mr. Tedesco? Uh, seeing on Mr. Pettit, would you like to summarize your testimony?
Uh, no, I'll just, uh. I'll lay out there what I already had, um, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tedesco, uh, is there a brief, uh, summation?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would just be repetitive at this point, so I thank you for your time and your indulgence and we would respectfully request that you support staff's recommendation. Um, and, and approve this conceptual site plan as recommended and as modified by applicant six, exhibit one, thank you.
I've seen that there are no other questions, uh, is there a motion?
Hold that. Uh, excuse me, Mr. Chair, David Warner, Principal Counsel. Um, I want to clarify a couple of things, um, and, uh, we have to take a separate motion on, uh, his request to introduce additional. So first of all, um, with regard to this hearing, um, this was a hearing on property at the. The east side of Old Branch Avenue, uh, eleven hundred fifty feet north of its intersection with Woodyard Road. Maybe eighty to ninety percent of the testimony we heard. Involved offsite issues that had nothing to do with this application. Now, we are holding a quasi judicial hearing. Which is somewhat like, uh, a case before a judge. We have a relaxed standard in our procedures, however, for accepting testimony that's not necessarily relevant. Because, uh, this isn't the court of law at the end of the day. And so we allow people to, you know, go off track somewhat, and, and that's what's happened in this case. Um, a, a lot of the, uh, evidence submitted by the opposition doesn't relate to this application. Now, uh, the applicant then spoke to a great degree about those issues as well and introduced. A lot of evidence related to issues that don't involve the CSP, but wanted to address them because. The applicant brought, or the, the opponent brought them up. So I just want to clarify that we have a lot of evidence that is not germane to your decision on the CSP. And we have to be careful, uh, on our decisions and, uh, in taking into account only the issues related to. The conceptual site plans for this particular property, so I wanted to clarify that. And then, uh, the second issue is, uh, board's procedures don't allow the submission of written testimony. Uh, that's submitted afternoon on Tuesday. However, uh, there is an exception that allows the board to accept additional evidence into the record after the close of the hearing. If necessary to ensure the hearing is fair and, um, that the record is complete. And in this case, as Mr. Tedesco pointed out, Mr. Pettit submitted pictures. Um, late on Monday night that he didn't even get a chance to see until Wednesday. So in this case, uh, his submission of additional written materials in the form of these pictures, which you've looked at. Are, uh, a response. which you've looked at, are a response to what Mr. Pettit submitted. And if you feel those are necessary to be accepted into the record, we will need a motion from the board to accept that. And I think Mr. Tedesco has made a case as to why, for a fair hearing, this evidence should be submitted because he didn't get a chance to respond to it. So, so we have to do that first and then after that, we can make our decision on the case.
Thank you for that explanation. Is there a motion to accept the photos from Mr. Pettit?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move. Mr. Chairman, I move, I move that we accept the applicant's photos as presented by Mr. Tedesco as applicant exhibit number four, I believe.
Second. It's been properly moved and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Is there a motion on this case?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve CSP dash two four zero zero two and TCP one dash zero zero two dash two zero two five, subject to the conditions as outlined in staff's report and is further modified by applicant exhibit number one, in addition to the applicant's proffered condition regarding forest edge planning along the east edge boundary and would ask that staff work with counsel to ensure the language is consistent in the resolution.
Second. It's been properly moved and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. That now concludes our items on today's agenda. Thank you all so much.